I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I will take the roll call since Mrs. DeCarlo is not here today. Mrs. Brooks, here. Mrs. Kuraralu, here. I'm so bad. Mrs. Mezic, here. Mrs. Shields, here. Mrs. Smith, here. Mr. Tomassini, stuck in traffic. Mrs. Hellborg. Can I make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Dennis McKeever as the Board's Secretary pro tem for the meeting tonight?
So moved.
Second. Show of hands. Awesome. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused notice of the date, time, and place of said meetings to be published in the Daily Record, the Star Ledger, and be posted in all schools in the district and the municipal building of the township and the township library. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose stated in the public notice? All documentation and materials considered by the Board of Education as part of this agenda are available for public review and comment. Members of the public are invited to come to the Board of Education Building off Green Pond Road during the regular business hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday if they wish to inspect any of the referenced items. May I have a motion to waive the pledge?
So moved.
Second. Show of hands. Motion to go into closed.
So moved.
Second. Oh, I apologize. Thank you, Lisa. Resolved that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education will meet in closed session to discuss matters involving personnel, litigation, acquisition of real property, security, negotiations, receipt of governmental funds. The content of said discussions will be disclosed to the public at such time and extent as is required by law. May I now have a motion to go into closed?
So moved.
Second. Show of hands. Okay. 6:03. Thank you. Can I have a motion to come out of closed?
So moved.
Second. 7:32. Pardon? Show of hands. Show of hands. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Love the noise. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal right to those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, public discussion is limited to 15 minutes with a three-minute limit per member of the public. The board president shall have the right to modify the length of public discussion as he or she seems appropriate. May I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands. Excellent. Do we have any members of the public? I will say it's nice to have actual members of the public. If you could just come to the microphone and state your name and address. You can just write your name and your address also on that sheet and then please state it as well for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Ripke and I live at 34 Cuyahoga Ave. Thank you Superintendent Ternamian and board members for your service to this district. Both of my children attend Stony Brook and I'm here tonight to discuss making masks optional for the 2021-2022 school year. Our own district legislators, among many others in the state, agree that choice is necessary. The survival rate of children contracting COVID is 99.997%. Children have been in masks for 15 months. The curve has flattened and according to the most current data from the district, there's not one current case of COVID. I looked at the district mask guidelines and I can guarantee they're not being followed with fidelity. I see the same issues where I also teach. I would elaborate on the specifics, but I know I'll run out of time. As per the FDA, face masks are designated as an experimental for emergency use with no long-term safety trials for daily use by children. Yet our children are masked for almost seven hours a day. I never consented to this experiment. Would you muzzle your dog for that long? Anyone? I'd like you to provide me and everyone here with the studies that you've read that prove the long-term safety of masking our children, but there are none. I will be following up until I receive the science that you're using to guide you in the decisions you're making about masking our children. Our children are being put at a greater risk from germs by not following the masking guidance properly. Doctors are seeing an uptick of strep bacteria and other viruses. Ophthalmologists are seeing more eye infections. Dentists are noticing that many more children have more than normal buildup on their teeth because wearing a mask causes a dry mouth. This is all from wearing masks. I'll be giving you all a folder with some information when I'm done. And there's an article in there discussing a lab analysis of children's masks, used face masks, and I am shocked at the dangerous pathogens that have been found embedded in these masks. There should have been two parents here today that aren't here that actually have had multiple skin issues with their children that they can't seem to get resolved, one having four, not four, multiple staph infections in his nose and another one with contact dermatitis that just won't heal because the mask is constantly on his face. Every morning, parents complete a COVID questionnaire, assuming these are being filled out honestly and sick children are staying home. Our schools should be a safe environment where masks can be a choice. Our own country's mask expert, Dr. Fauci, has flip-flopped from no masks to one mask to two masks. Who are we to believe? This is not about science anymore. It sounds like it's about political power. A portion of Murphy's executive order states masking includes exceptions for situations indoors or outdoors where wearing a mask would inhibit the individual's health. I don't know about you, but I can't imagine any one of you right now are comfortable having that covering your face. This is the directive that you're failing to see that should give you the allowance to give our children the option of masking. I've included in my folder that I'll be giving you the Mansfield Township's Safe Return Plan to School for the upcoming school year and how they have made masking optional. If they can do it, I believe that you can too. I've also included the contact information for their superintendent and urge that you call them and discuss what they've done and how they did it. The inconsistencies do not make sense. Children can play sports without masks. We can go into stores, bars, restaurants, pretty much anywhere without a mask, but our children are still being masked in schools. The longer we as parents do not advocate for our kids just means the longer our kids' physical, mental, and emotional health is going to be affected. Our kids will not speak up because they've been so conditioned to follow the rules. It's not right that they're afraid to use their voice to stand up for their rights. I'm raising my children, who are here right now, to be free thinkers and stand up for what they believe in. A child's freedom does not stop where someone else's fear begins. Please make masks optional and make them optional regardless of someone's vaccination status, whether that be your staff, your students. Please consider that. I really urge you. And I'll be giving you some folders with some information. I don't know what science you've been all looking at, but I would really love to see it. I think the community should see it. I'm honestly very tired of hearing, "We're following the guidance, we're following the guidance, we're listening to the governor." I want to see what is guiding you. I want to see the experts that you're hearing from and listening to and what you're reading because if we have to go into another school year where these kids are masked, it's not, it won't go well. I can guarantee it. My own kids are struggling. So that's what I have to say. Thank you so much for listening and I appreciate you letting me go over my three minutes.
Anyone else?
Can I get these two now real quick?
Yeah, or you can just leave them at the end of one of the desks.
You're fine.
Is this the superintendent?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to make-
Congratulations.
Thank you. I like your necklace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I am Maya Lynn Ripke and here is my presentation. I go to Stony Brook Elementary. I'm in fourth grade. Masks make me wheeze in PE class when we run playing games inside the gym. When this happens, I stop running and just walk with my mask on. It does not make my breathing any easier and it makes me tired. When I'm in class, students and teachers sometimes when I take a little mask break and pull my mask down for like one second, they say, "Pull your mask back up." I am pulling my mask down because I need a break from the mask because it distracts me and sometimes on a hot day, it makes me sweat. My mask distracts me from learning. Why can't I go into a store with, without a mask, but when I get to school, I have to have my mask on? I don't understand why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Ripke. I live at 34 Cuyahoga Ave. Can you hear me now? Is it on? Did you shut it off? I think everybody can hear me. Have you researched the data on the harm that masks cause? Based on research done by Dr. Mary Harrow, the data are overwhelming on this topic. Masks can cause a number of issues: low oxygen, high carbon dioxide levels, shortness of breath, toxicity, inflammation, increased stress hormones, and sugar in the body. They can also create fear, cause anxiety, headaches, compromise cognitive performance, and other problems. My wife included information on this study in the folder you've just received. I do have some questions. Has any data been gathered across the district from the counseling departments regarding the emotional and psychological effects masks having on children? I know enough parents whose children in the district are struggling. Do you know that the teen suicide rate has climbed to 40% since last year? Our children's psyches are being crushed. Did the district accept grant money for mask compliance? If the answer is yes, that means you are using our children as pawns. Budget cuts should not replace your moral compass when it comes to our children and their ability to breathe freely. Our kids are not bargaining chips. There is no research on the long-term safety effects of masks. Think about your own children and what it is like for them to be muzzled all day. Please make masks optional in this upcoming school year. I urge you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have anyone?
Am I allowed to read something that someone sent me on behalf of the community member?
I mean, you can, but you're now talking for somebody else. I mean, I-
Well, I mean, she emailed it to you, but I have a letter with her name on it.
Do you want to give it to us and we can have it? Or if you want to read it, I don't, I don't have an objection, by the way. So I don't have an objection, no. No, it's fine. If you, if you give it to me though, then it's accurate. It's put, but no.
Abe, do we have anyone virtual?
Yeah, we're just checking to see if we have anybody tuning in.
I'm just confirming if anyone's calling in. Sorry. Nope? Sorry.
This is a, this is from Allison Ponce at 16, actually, I don't have her address, but she lives in the lake. She says, "Dear Board members of the, dear members of the Board of Education, I'm writing to as a very concerned parent of an incoming kindergarten or student who's faced with wearing a mask for the duration of the 2021-2022 school year. As the rate of infection continues to decline across the state of New Jersey, I ask myself on a daily basis why young children are still being forced to mask up when it has been proven over and over again that children are not super spreaders. After a year and a half of trying to control this pandemic, it is time to seriously discuss unmasking children. I'm a strong supporter of masks becoming optional for children and teachers alike in schools. The list of school districts moving forward, moving toward making masks optional is growing in number by the day. Why has Rockaway Township not moved in this direction? As a parent, I'm more concerned about the prolonged use of masks in children, especially as it relates to education. Masks impair facial recognition and face identification. They impair verbal and nonverbal communication and block emotional signaling between a teacher and a student. This alone is extremely concerning as proper communication is integral to learning. Children are meant to engage with one another. A mask inhibits this in so many ways. Does Rockaway Township have evidence to show that communication has not been affected by daily mask wearing? In addition, so many students have reported anxiety when it comes to wearing a mask in school all day. Wearing a mask for long stretches of time is really hard to do for anyone. Can you imagine what that is like for a child? If breathing feels inhibited and they feel that they need to pull the mask down to breathe easier, they're promptly reprimanded by their teachers or administrators of the school. That has the potential to affect their mental and emotional well-being if they're constantly reprimanded about how they wear their masks. How are teachers even probably able to do their job if they have to constantly police mask usage in the classrooms? Do you have any evidence to prove that masks have not affected the emotional, mental, physical well-being of your students? I know that I'm not alone in wanting a choice for our children to wear a mask or to not wear a mask. Masks should not be mandated in schools. Other states have had great success with optional mask wearing for an entire school year. Please consider the concerns that so many of us have with masks. They are not the answer. Thank you for your attention. Best regards, Allison Ponce."
Thank you.
She emailed this to you as well, so.
Oh, if it's to the board, then we're good.
It's to me? Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands.
Ms. Brooks? May I?
Oh, I was going to close first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Before you go, I would just like to commend little Miss Maya because that takes a lot of bravery to come up here and speak so passionately and beautifully, what might I add? No offense, moms or anybody out there, but I just want to commend you. I thought that was excellent and keep it up. I think we have a future leader on our hand.
She spoke at the dental board about leading children.
Sorry, Dr. T.
Oh, that's what I meant, that? Oh, thank you. I want to also, Maya, very proud, excited, and inspired by your courage tonight in coming out and speaking. We support you sharing your voice with us and we welcome it. So you did a very nice job. Thank you very much. Let me now, as we prepare to close public comment, share some comments in response to what you shared tonight. I want to reassure you, your concerns have been heard. Let me also say a little bit more, though, about optional masks and the 21-22 school year. I can assure you and the community, it will be strongly considered. I'm not yet ready to make a final decision at this time, but some insight that I'd share with you and for the community to consider about, you know, the values of our current reopening plan that I hope will, you know, give you insight and where I hope will be in September is that we were a school, community, and district that did value as much normalcy as possible in September. We opened, we opened with full days. We opened with lunches. We kept our, our teachers and our professionals in their roles where they have expertise so that we could have as much normalcy in our school day dating back to the very start of this current school year. And so I hope that just gives you insight and hopefully a little bit of trust and comfort that we as a school district will do everything we can to put conditions in place so that there is as much normalcy in place for September. That being said, you, as you did tonight appropriately so, ask, well, why not say that now? And I understand and heard your concerns about following the guidance, following the guidance, and I understand there's frustrations around that as a, that rhetoric. However, I would just ask you to consider that following the guidance consistently over this past school year did serve our community well from the perspective of our teachers came back and they stayed and they were real heroes throughout this. And one of the reasons I think they felt safe coming back so fully is because we consistently followed that guidance. And so I'm cautious about swaying from that guidance at this point. I will also share with you that one of the reasons, what also weighed heavily on my decision-making present time about continuing with the masks as a mandate, was that we are blessed here in our schools with AC and central air. The specifics of the guidance over the last few weeks and the governor's updates have related to excessive heat. And I know that there's inconsistencies and contradictions between what the students are doing outside of school and in school, but by being as consistent as we can with the guidance applied to in-school, I feel like we maintain trust with all of our stakeholders. We do have families that have reached out to me this past week, implored me to not remove the mask mandate. And so it's important that I think that we hear everyone, but at the same time that we remain consistent in our decision-making so that we can hopefully maintain everyone's trust. But to, in closing, I'll just say, to the point of where you want us to be in September, I share that conviction and I want to get us there. I'm just not yet ready to make a final decision. I'd like to wait to better understand the current conditions of what hopefully, hopefully be a pandemic coming to an end this summer. And so that's, I just wanted to give you a robust response and a way to demonstrate respect for you all coming out tonight and we appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the communication we've been able to have back and forth via email.
Of course.
It's been great. So I can't wait to hear what you think about it. Can I send you a folder?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I checked prior to the meeting. There were no additional communications. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 19?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Kuraralu.
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic.
Yes.
Mrs. Shields.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 8?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kuraralu.
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic.
Yes.
Mrs. Shields.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
I abstain.
And last but not least, can I have the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes of June fourteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Two, Mrs. Karalaru.
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick.
Yes.
Mrs. Shields.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Elder, are you able to put the presentation up on the screen there? Just so the people in the audience can see, what I'll be presenting tonight is our Safe Return Plan. It's going to look very similar to the template you shared with me from Mansfield. And I just wanted to speak through a few parts of it. And am I right that this is broadcasting as well, Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If you would scroll down, this first page is just a cover page explaining the overall expectations for the plan. It's a template that came directly from the New Jersey Department of Education. As you move into the second page, there are three categories overall on this plan. If you would pause just right there, I'd appreciate it. The first category respers to maintaining the health and safety conditions, and there are specific items underneath there that each district's required to report out on. Now, we talked about the mask piece there, and I regret if some of that language is frustrating for you because it does basically commit us to continuing to follow the guidance. For number B, or letter B, I want to say, I apologize, for physical distancing, as we scroll down just a little bit more, a few things to highlight for the community here. As a district who's fully opened in our elementary schools right now, assuming there is no change in the social distancing guidance, our elementary schools are prepared to reopen fully in September as of today. If the social distancing doesn't change related to middle schools, we will still intend to open Copeland Middle School fully in September. However, if it's still the same requirements for social distancing during lunch, it will require us to expand the lunch service to Bassett Hall. Bassett Hall is the second gymnasium over here, if you go out this door to the left. Presently, if you haven't been in Copeland or see how lunch service was done throughout the school year, the reason we're able to run Copeland on a full-day schedule with lunches is we use, we basically took away all of the benches, the traditional lunch benches, and put individual student desks in rows here that were six feet apart, and we operated safely the entire school year. Now, if we need to continue to remain six feet during lunch in the September, our plan is to expand more desks into the gymnasium, and that will allow us to make sure that Copeland and thereby our entire school district is fully reopened in September. Our hand washing requirements will stay in place. If you would scroll down to D, Mr. Elder, I'd appreciate it. Another key additional resource that we put in place this year that served us well because of the additional cleaning required is we did double up custodian shifts throughout our schools throughout this school year, which meant that we had double custodian support, custodial support during the lunch periods during the school year. We would expect to keep that in place. We're also investing in a new technology for all of our HVAC systems that we had at wire this school year called bipolar ionization units. This summer, they will be installed throughout all of our schools. Mr. Elder, if you would go to F. Thank you. This speaks to diagnostic and screening testing. One of the most significant changes that we're projecting for September now that we had in place for this entire school year is moving away from the daily screener. What we're envisioning at this point is having three attestation forms that we ask families to complete three times a year that basically commits to certain, you know, maintaining certain conditions for sending your student to school. We envision having that aligned with when the report cards are published, so that three times a year, we'll ask our community to attest that they're going to, you know, take their child's temperature in the morning and make sure that they're sending their child to school, having screened them appropriately. Rather than the daily screener, we're envisioning doing a three times a year attestation form. And then for H there, Mr. Elder, if you would, we're basically committing to ensuring that we will continue to have appropriate accommodations for our students with disabilities in place as we have already had in place this entire school year. The second category, ensuring continuity of services, I'd like to just highlight a few areas of these comments. The purpose for, one of the objectives in coming back in September is we're going to be extremely smart about using our data to ensure that we are putting interventions in place as needed for any learning loss that may have occurred. That means we'll have universal screening protocols in place in all of our schools at all of the grade levels three times a year. We'll have our full days in place, which we had this year. And one of the things we had this year that we'll continue to do next year is we'll have fully staffed in all of our schools academic intervention teachers. That has proven pivotal this year in our elementary schools. And then for Copeland, we're adding a second full-time reading specialist teacher for the, for September. Those are some additional resources that we're investing in for September, and then we're excited to continue to build off of. If you would scroll down, Mr. Elder, the final component of the plan is a commitment to public comment, and so you all are experiencing that tonight. And this is right now the plan that will be on our website by June twenty-fourth and then updated on a regular basis throughout the upcoming school year. And so-
You're looking for a reading specialist?
They were just hi-
Hold on, I'll open it to public comment, one second.
I know there's a limit of formality in this motion. We're excited to have an audience here.
It is really nice.
Sorry.
I don't want Dennis to yelp.
So that is our, yeah, thank you. I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to open to public comment?
Motion.
So, second. I'm going to give it to Mrs. Mezick and Mrs. Smith. Raise of hands, show of hands, please. Okay, we are open. You still have to go to the mic, sorry.
Oh. It's supposed to be on this.
It has to be on this topic. Have you hired a reading specialist yet? For the middle school?
We have.
Okay. Anyone else? You can just go to the mic. And just state your name and address, please. And write it on the paper.
Hi, my name's Erin Labrie, I'm at eight SUAV. I was just curious for the, with the reopening, are we having a virtual option again in September? Or are we looking to be fully in the building?
We're looking to be fully in the building. We'll have to make a decision closer to the school year based on the guidance if we're required to have a virtual option and offer that. As of now, the governor and the guidance have stated that there will be no requirement for a virtual option.
Okay. So I guess, because if the masking remains mandatory, will there be a virtual option for the students? Like, I represent the minority of families who pulled out of district because of the masks. My husband and I have six kids, we've been in district for many, many years, have been super happy. Copeland has done a phenomenal job with their virtual learning. But we've taken all our younger kids out because of the masks, and my, we have a soon-to-be seventh grader who we, who's fully virtual because of the mask. So just been kind of curious what's going to happen with, if there's a mask mandate, is there an option for kids who can't be in a mask all day long?
Currently, that, we're not considering that. So I can tell you that the, midway through this school year, we've, we found that hybrid instruction was significantly more challenging in the elementary grades, specifically K1 and 2. And so we made a change midway through the year where we, for the requirement for full virtual instruction to happen in K1, we turned off the hybrid instruction and we then had a separate K1 teachers just virtually for those students. At this time, we are not expecting to have that resource in place for the next upcoming school year.
Okay. And Copeland would be the same?
Correct. We do not anticipate having hybrid instruction in place for the upcoming school year.
Okay.
Anyone else? May I have a motion to close? Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have someone? Pass her in?
Currently says her iPhone is connecting audio. She's not able to hear us as of yet.
Okay.
I have put in requests to her to start her video, so.
Okay. It says her audio is connecting or not connected?
Donna's iPhone is connecting to audio and can't hear you yet.
Okay. Do we have anyone else in addition to her?
No.
When is it appropriate to maybe go back?
She wanted to speak on the, the Safe Return presentation. You have another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting, right?
Yep. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, we'll try to go back and see if we can pull her in. May I have a motion to close to public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands. Thank you. The business administrator's report, I know it says none, but we have a note.
Yes, and I am not the business administrator for this district. Hopefully, Mrs. DeCarlo is having a wonderful time where she is. There are two hand-carried resolutions for this evening's agenda, which I should report to the community and to the board, who's aware of it. Under the special education resolutions, there will be a hand-carry for number three. It reads, be it resolved that the Rockaway Township Board of Education approves settlement for case number 2020-31756. That's 2020-31756. By the way, when we get to this portion of the agenda, I will reread these hand-carries so everybody is aware that we have hand-carries for this evening. When you get to finance, we have another hand-carry. This is going to be Resolution fourteen under purchasing. This is going to be for the new water treatment project at KDM. I'm going to read the resolution so you're aware of what it is. Whereas upon the recommendation of the superintendent and pursuant to NJSA 18A-18-7, the board has solicited pricing for the new water treatment project at Catherine D. Malone Elementary School, and whereas the board received pricing from Passaic Bergen Water Softening, Inc. in the amount of $195,000 to complete the project, and whereas the project is exempt from bidding pursuant to the Public School Contracts Law as an emergency contract, now therefore be it resolved, the board hereby awards the project to Passaic Bergen Water Softening, Inc. in the amount of $195,000. That motion will be reread later in the agenda, and the reason that we do it is so that members of the public who didn't have previous notice of a hand-carried resolution have an opportunity to comment on it. With that, I have nothing further to report.
Thank you. Curriculum report.
Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. It is June, and we've made it through the school year. Our schools have been open with students physically present for 162 of the possible 180 days. Everyone in this community deserves credit for this. Teachers, students, parents, guardians, school administrators, school board members, and the entire Rockaway community. This was a magnificent achievement and one that I am extremely proud to be a part of. One of the benefits of making the move to Ready Mathematics this past school year was the inclusion of iReady Math, the digital arm of the program. iReady Math uses student assessment data to create a personalized learning path for students called MyPath. Throughout this year, our students have been working on MyPath to help remediate and accelerate their learning, and the results have been wonderful. In June, we also added iReady for ELA as well. To aid those students who wish to continue this specific type of learning over the summer, iReady for both math and ELA will be available and open all summer. Students can continue to log into their accounts via the clever logins they've used all year. Additionally, the district will continue to work with any family that needs technological support in this area. Also, over the last several months, we've been hard at work to revise the Grade Six STEAM course, and that curriculum is on the agenda this evening for approval. This curriculum is the direct result of the hard work from the following: Erin Boots King, Vanessa Waxman, Olivia Dunagan, Abram Elder, Michael LaFranca, and Alfonso Gennella. This course is designed to allow students to explore design and engineering problems through the use of the engineering design process, with a focus on using the principles of empathetic design to solve problems. Students will make use of natural materials, handheld tools, and 3D printers to create solutions to these design challenges. They will also focus on the five Cs: collaboration, communication, cooperation, critical thinking, and creative problem solving, and we are excited to launch this this fall. In response to some community questions, we have decided to resume COGAT testing in the fall of 2021. The district uses COGAT testing to help place students into the GATE program. The testing will take place early in the year for grades three and four and be made optional for gradients, for students in grade six. Using that data, the district will evaluate students in those grades for entrance into the GATE program. Traditionally, the district tests grades two and five in the spring, but due to conditions in the spring of 2020 and in the spring of 2021, the test was not administered. Moving forward, the test will be administered again to grades two and five in the spring of 2022 to return to the normal cycle of that test. As always, should anyone have questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to my office. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Higgins from the board?
I'm just excited about the iReady ELA. You know how much I love the math one? I was going to tell you, if you needed someone to pilot it this summer, I have a incoming seventh grader that I would love to, but I see that it's going to be available to everyone.
Anyone else? Committee reports.
I have something for negotiations. The board and the RTA met for the ninth joint session on June ninth. The parties discussed items related to lunch duty, organization of the CBA, stipend positions, and posting procedures. The parties reached agreement on multiple items and have executed tentative agreements. Additionally, the parties have exchanged salary proposals. The parties are scheduled to meet again on August tenth, but will continue discussions in the interim.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Mrs. Smith?
I have the Policy Ad-Hoc Committee report. The Policy Ad-Hoc Committee met on May twenty-fifth from 4:15 to 5:45 PM. In attendance were Dr. Tsunamian, Kristi Cuvera-Lavre, Mrs. Mezick, myself, and we had a guest, Sandy Nacastro. The committee discussed a reflection on what went well with the process of updating the manual, reflection regarding areas of improvement. We also received feedback from our vendor regarding the process. We had made a proposal requesting a discount on services, and that proposal was accepted. And at this time, it is the recommendation that the Policy Ad-Hoc Committee be dissolved.
Awesome. Any board discussion?
Just like getting money back.
I know. That's always nice. And then I have one more committee report. The Education Curriculum Committee, that met on June ninth from 4:15 to 5:45. At the board conference room, in attendance, Mr. Higgins, Nancy Helberg, Aaron Thomasini, and myself. The items that you will see on tonight's board agenda for approval, leveled bookrooms for each building, that's been added back onto the budget, summer hours for Vanessa Waxman, and the sixth-grade STEAM curriculum. In addition, we've received a preview regarding professional development. There is a lot, you know, plans for the upcoming year. The Destiny Year Educator Contest actually had the fifth grade win, so congratulations to those fifth grade teachers. There's an RTI review, Panorama Education regarding SEL, risk assessment training, there's iReady ELA math, seventh grade Ready Math training, pilot trainings, Ben Q boards, co-teaching at Birchwood, hands-on with care training, and K to five guided reading. So, you know, the curriculum committee's been very busy regarding all of that. Other committee discussions, policy, something that came up is the Title I policy that has been identified for updating. been identified for updating, and there is a parent involvement program presentation that is available on the website. Our next meeting is June 30 at 4:15 PM in the board conference room.
Thank you. Any board discussion?
Was that for discussion, or you want to go down?
No, I was too quick to raise my hand for another report.
No discussion? Do we have any more reports? Mr. Tomassini?
Thank you.
It's the microphone.
Yes, and I'm leaning in. The Operations Committee met on Wednesday, May 26 at 4:30 PM. Present for the meeting were Mrs. DeCarlo, Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Mezick, Dr. Ternamian, as well as myself. Couple of highlights from that meeting. The security grant that was submitted was approved by the county BA and is now just waiting final approval. Additionally, we had some conversation on the Class 3s and granting access to certain programs to enhance their capabilities at all of our schools. We also discussed the, the Class 3 vacancies and Chief McParland's continuing search to hire those Class 3s to get us back to being full again. We also discussed lunches, and lunches being similar to this year with some federal grants that will still apply, so hopefully that, that will help our community as well. We discussed updates on the KDM water treatment and that the permit is good until December 31st. And the final thing on here is, as we know tomorrow, Copeland graduation is going to be occurring at Peterson, so very exciting. It's in person, and I am very, very happy for all of our graduates from Copeland that they're going to have the opportunity to be in person at Peterson and be able to graduate as normal as possible. Sounds really exciting. Last thing that I'll add there is myself and Mrs. Brooks yesterday went and signed the bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board discussion from, from Mr. Tomassini? I would like just to note, we did sign the bills, and there was lots and lots of invoices for school classroom libraries, so that always gets me excited, as silly as it sounds, all those books. So yeah, lots of that stuff, so awesome, awesome job. No other committee reports? We're going to move to board actions. On page four, we begin with personnel. There is no discussion. Since it's personnel, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Mrs. Mezick?
And second by Mr. Tomassini?
Yeah, I got him.
Personnel starts on page four, goes all the way to page six. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Kuralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Next section is our HIV. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shields, Mr. Tomassini. Dr. Ternamian, do you have anything to add to this before we vote?
We do just have one current open investigation. Everything else is closed.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Kuralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Next section is education. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Mezick, Mrs. Smith. Any board discussion? Any members of the public? Let's try to bring her back in, just to...
Do we do it here or at the end?
Oh, do you want me to do it at the end end?
Yeah, what I was, do is do it, this is public comment on these, she might want to make a comment on the recovery plan or the safe plan, probably appropriately give it a shot at the end. But I would tell you, if you can get her live, just do it.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's a point of order. I mean, we're going to follow Roberts to the core, but...
Let's see what she would like to comment on. It's like the anticipation, see them pop up.
They should be able to hear us. I've requested that they turn on their video and have...
Hello? Okay, we'll just bring them back in at the end. Thank you. Oh, I didn't even open to the public anyway. Look at that.
You have a motion and a second on the education resolutions, right?
I do. Roll call.
Mrs. Kuralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. On page eight, can I have a motion for, to approve special education? So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shields, Mr. Tomassini?
And just to remind the board, it is in this section that we have the first of two hand-carries. This one reads, "Be it resolved that the Rockaway Township Board of Education approves the settlement agreement for case number 2020-31756."
Thank you. I have a roll call, please.
I think you have to check if there's any public comment.
There's only this one woman, and she has no mic. We'll just bring her back in at the end for Dennis's recommendation.
Oh, you're looking at me. Mrs. Kuralaru? Mrs. Mezick?
Yep.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
It's a fun time today.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to, to approve Section E on page nine, Administration?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tomassini, and I'm going to give that to, I think it was Mrs. Shields? Yes, no? Items one and two, any board discussion?
And three.
Pardon?
There's three.
Oh, and three, thank you, Lisa. The middle box, the big one. No board discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Okay. Mrs. Kuralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
On page 10, F. Finance, motion to approve Finance, please. So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is the second. Let's address the chair. This is the second time we have a hand-carry resolution.
Yep, starts on 10 and ends in 12, right? Yep.
And just for the sake of the public, this second resolution reads as follows, "Whereas upon the recommendation of the superintendent and pursuant to the Public School Contracts Law, the board has solicited pricing for the new water treatment project at the Catherine D. Malone Elementary School, and whereas the board received pricing from Passaic Bergen Water Softening, Inc. in the amount of $195,000 to complete the project, and whereas the project is exempt from bidding pursuant to the Public School Contracts Law as an emergency contract, now therefore be it resolved, the board hereby awards the project to Passaic Bergen Water Softening, Inc. in the amount of $195,000."
Thank you. Any board discussion?
Yes, just one point, I just want to make sure that's being noted, that it's number 14.
Yeah, on my, I wrote it in at 14.
Okay.
No problem.
Any board discussion? I'd just like to thank the Birchwood PTA. Our PTAs are great in Rockaway Township. We're very blessed. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kuralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
I am a yes on numbers 1 through 12 and 14, but I abstain on number 13 as the Birchwood PTA's treasurer.
Rachel can read that. Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, page 13, Section G, Policy. Motion to approve Policy, please. So moved.
Second.
Take it away.
So, you'll see we have some things for first read and some things for second read. I will point out, though, that the 8561 procurement procedures for school nutrition programs, they actually, Strauss Esme actually had additional updates in our legal update, Alert 223, so we're going to have to make further additions to that. And other than that, you guys got a copy? Copy's posted online. If you have any questions? Just ask.
So just the, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to say something now?
You have a question?
Go for it.
Okay, just to clarify, so the policy 8561, when it comes up for a second read, it will have that language in it?
It'll have addition, you'll get it, you'll get it again with, with the additional updates.
Okay, and that's only language from Strauss Esme? The policy committee didn't change anything from that point?
Well, so the, the changes that are for 8561 are based on Strauss Esme legal updates, but at times we have to change things such as pupil to student, things like that, so we do adjust it for the district and to make it consistent with our other policies.
Mm-hmm.
But all the changes are reflected there. The substantive changes are from Strauss Esme. We don't make substantive changes, usually just verbiage and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I think, Lisa, maybe, I'm confused now, because that's not that hard to do lately, but do we have to do that policy again, Dennis, for a first read, since it'll be new changes based on this, or we can do the second read based upon those additional changes?
You need to, if you're going to get additional changes, don't do the second read until you have the thing fully incorporated, but you can introduce this on a first read.
Perfect.
Make the edits, but make sure you're comfortable and you get the edits, so that when you do adopt it as a second read, it becomes an adopted.
Excellent. Just want to make sure we're not doing it twice.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Any further questions? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Kuralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Excellent job.
Okay, moving on to discussion items. Old business, new business, we can combine it, because who knows what is there.
I want to thank the RTA for the planter event here. You get to pick a little pot, a baked pot, and put seeds in it. My kids already have it, so I just want to thank them for that. It was awesome.
Oh, it looked adorable. Anyone else? Mrs. Smith?
I just wanted to comment on the opportunity to view the Celebrity Day. It is one of my favorite days that occurs here at Copeland, and I thoroughly enjoyed watching the presentation. It's always, you know, so impressive and so motivating, and, you know, every year I like it more and more.
Awesome. Anyone else?
I just wanted to, if I could, I'd just like to acknowledge Principal Gennella and his leadership team. We are on tap to have a really inspiring 8th grade graduation tomorrow, and his team has been working tirelessly on playing this for the last several weeks. Similarly, I'd like to acknowledge the town, the township, the mayor, the entire, the township officials who have been in almost daily contact with us in the district. It's been a great collaboration and a true example of great teamwork. We're super excited about having 8th grade graduation here in the township at Peterson Field tomorrow, so it's just, there's been so many people, our maintenance department, our IT team, Mr. Elder and his group have really been working on this around the clock for about two weeks now, so just like to thank them.
Agreed. Anyone else? I'd like to just thank Mr. Elder and the IT team, because our new setup is really awesome, and I know they've been working really hard to try to make it better. We've gotten a lot of feedback over the years, not just this particular school year, but they've really taken a really big initiative to try to make this more, you know, accessible to everyone, easy to hear us. So, once again, thank you, thank you. You're greatly appreciated. Okay, if there's no, nothing else from the board, let's try public again? May I have a motion to open it to the public, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Show of hands? Okay, maybe third time's a charm. Hello? Are you out there?
Please, they're requesting them to open up their video, so they can hear us.
Right.
Can we hear them?
We should be able to hear speaking.
Okay. And we've requested them to turn the video?
Yes.
Okay.
If we can, if they want to make a comment that we can hear, make it now, or wait a, you know, wait a moment or two, but then, you know, otherwise...
Donna, can you hear us? Okay, unfortunately, it's not. Okay, there's no other members of the public? May I have a motion to close, please, to public?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands? Okay, that's it. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands? Meeting adjourned 8:30. Thank you, everyone, so much. I'm super excited for tomorrow. Have a great night.